All right. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Merrimack School District School Board for August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. Hope everybody out there is enjoying the remaining few weeks of summer before we gear up for what is going to be a fantastic school year. I'd like to open tonight's meeting with our public participation portion. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak, we ask that you come up to this microphone right here, state your name and address. Although if you are a student, there is no need to state your address, just your name. So if you'd like to come and speak, now would be the time. Seeing none, we will move on to recognitions.
Excuse me, I think I should know that by now. We don't have any recognitions at tonight's meeting.
All right, then we will move on to informational updates and we'll start with superintendent update.
Thank you, Ken. As you mentioned, school begins shortly. We're looking forward to another successful year, welcoming our students and our staff back and parents. School will begin, as a reminder, on August thirty-first. On that day, it is Thursday, August thirty-first, students in grades K five, seven, and nine will come in at the normal arrival time. Students in all other grades will come in on a two-hour delayed basis. We tried that for the first time last year to allow students who are transitioning from one building or grade level to another, some building changes, to have a little bit of time to acclimate themselves to their new environment, to get to know the school, meet with some of the staff, maybe take a tour of the building. And as I said, it worked out very well. We had a lot of positive feedback from the principals, so we're going to do that same thing this year. The bus company has been very receptive to that and are very much aware of that. A little bit later on in the agenda, Amy will be talking about the professional development that will be taking place on August twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth. So we're looking forward to a great year. We're doing lots of good things in cooperation and collaboration with everyone, and it's always exciting. Always sorry to see the summer end, obviously, but it's exciting to face another school year and meet and greet everyone again. Want to congratulate some of our students for participation in a local theater company. They were cast of forty students and ten of them, twenty-five percent of that staff of that cast were from Merrimack. Five of the students had lead roles and they put on the production of Little Mermaid, which is always a popular production. I want to give a shout out to Jenny Epstein, who was Ariel, Ben Pittman, who was Prince Eric, Adelina Camerlin, who was Ursula, Chloe Hardy, who was Sebastian, and Trey Grant, who was Chef Louis. This is that picture. I'm going to pass this around. They can take a look at it. What that says to us, we want to work in the upcoming years on building theater arts at Merrimack High School, okay? It's an integral part of a high school education and middle school education at every level, but particularly at the high school. And so we want to give some focus to that over the next several years to build that up because we have very talented students doing terrific things and we want to give them that opportunity in our school system. So congratulations to all of them. They did an outstanding job. Also, from Criggus, Bozeman, who's the new principal at middle school, teachers and staff have participated in a system of cares, tier-one team meetings to create enhanced systems in the school that will help them determine the best areas of support for the students, which is very, very important. Middle school will be offering self-guided tours on Monday, August twenty-eighth, from three to five P M. During this time, students will have an opportunity to explore the school. This will not be an opportunity to meet the students. That will happen at an open house. And that open house at the middle school is coming up in mid-September. A seventh-grade open house will be on September thirteenth. And the eighth-grade open house will be on September fourteenth, both nights from six o'clock to seven fifteen. Also, on the twenty-fourth of this month, next week, we will be having our legal counsel, civil rights legal counsel, conduct training for all of the members of our leadership team and the special education coordinators in each building on a variety of topics, including a compendium of updated changes to federal and state statutes that impact the functioning of school systems and in particular, special education. They will be talking about the discipline law and the nuances of the discipline law, any changes to it. We'll be talking about bullying, we're talking about five oh four of the I D E A Act, and we'll be talking about restraint and seclusion. And we have a leadership team meeting tomorrow morning. We're going to discuss with the leadership team. We'd like their input on any particular topics. Beginning with school operations, student rights, staff rights that we would like to cover with a legal counsel. So an exciting week coming up, and I'll give you a little update along with Amy and Matt about our August retreat that we had earlier in the month. That was very successful also, and that's all I have for tonight.
Great. Questions or comments? The only comment I would make is the transition day is great and I hope it continues. I just want to make sure we, as a district, get all of that information out everywhere we can put information because, you know, the people who have been here for a while are expecting it, but we have new families moving in all the time and people changing schools for the first time. So wherever we can put that information, we got to put it there.
That's all going out no later than Wednesday of this week.
Great.
Be on Facebook, be on our website also, and whatever other means, because communication is a primary goal, priority goal of this year, and we're going to work on that.
Perfect. Moving on, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good night. Good evening, everyone. Just like Bill and the rest of you, it's hard to believe that these is the last, this is the last two weeks of the summer and we're looking down the beginning of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. I hope you know that planning and preparations are underway for a really great school year. As Bill mentioned later in the meeting, I'll have an overview of the professional learning activities for the beginning, the first three days, as well as a draft for the other days that we have on the docket. Of course, those needs may change as the school year progresses, but we need to put in trainings for our new programs as well as our mandatory trainings related to bullying and harassment and things like that. So there is an outline in your packet and I'm happy to take questions later in the meeting on those agenda items. This, next week, we have several activities planned for teachers and staff. On Monday, August twenty-first, we are hosting a Google workshop. And if you've ever been to a Google workshop, they were most recently called Google summits. So they focus on the four Cs, which is critical thinking, creative thinking, communicating, and collaborating using Google Workspace. So I know that we've talked about how we are using Google in our current, in our current space here in Merrimack. Students and teachers have access to Google, and so we're just trying to make sure that they have the training that they need to be able to successfully use things like Google Docs or Google Sheets, Google Slides, as we work towards determining whether that will be our primary platform or not. But we really wanted to offer some very high-quality professional learning related to Google, so we're excited about that. We have some really terrific facilitators coming and we'll be at Merrimack Middle School for the day. And we'll have a breakdown of different sessions that teachers and staff can sign up for, and so we're really excited about that. And Tuesday and Wednesday next week, our district mentoring program, The Torchbearers, kicks off. On Tuesday, all of the new teachers will meet their mentor, get a tour of their new building, and we'll start that process of their transition to joining the Merrimack community. And then on Wednesday, they have lunch with the district leadership team and they take a tour of the town. They stop and get ice cream. So it's really a great way for them to get the feel of Merrimack and to also have their questions answered and to connect with a mentor right out the gate. So we're really excited about that. I also just wanted to provide you with an update. I know that we had talked in the spring about updating our teacher evaluation model. And so there are members of the administrative team and members from the M T A. We've met a couple of times. We've looked at other districts and how their evaluation system works. And we've really been able to have great conversation about what might work here in Merrimack, what are the current needs, what are some sticky parts that we run up against when teachers get their evaluation? Because we really wanted to be a growth-oriented model that provides teachers with the feedback that they need to just continue to grow in their practice. So we are hoping to have a new model go to the M T A for their review early spring so that we could put it in place for next school year, so the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. So we're making really great progress on that already. So that's all I have for tonight.
Great. Questions or feedback? Go ahead, Lori.
A couple of things. First, so thank you for all your work for professional development. Just a few years ago, all of our professional development was front-loaded just in August in teachers. So there was no adjustment to the students' needs, to the teachers' needs. So I really appreciate that we have a vision and then we still can make adjustments. And then on the teacher evaluation model, like the one thing I really liked that you said is that our model is going to be the Merrimack model. We're going to take all kinds of input, but we're going to tailor it to our school district. So again, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
And the only other piece I would provide, just as someone who has been through similar trainings and P D, one thing that we always value, you've got great programs and offerings lined up. Sometimes the best P D is just allowing time for collaboration within departments. And I know once the school year starts, being able to sit in a room with your department is a challenging thing to do. So one thing I would just, unless I missed it here, a suggestion would be to, at some point, just to allow time for teachers to get together and collaborate, so.
Yeah, and I would just add, on October sixth and on January twenty-sixth, which are our other two full days, there is time built in for them to be working in their departments, especially at the middle school and the high school, as they'll be developing the competencies. They are going to be looking at what it takes to be a professional learning community and then looking at the competencies to build them by department. So yes, there is built-in time. And also, the iReady training on October sixth is about three hours. So they will have formal training from our iReady trainer for, say, the morning, and then in the afternoon, they'll be in their P L Cs looking at the data and really digging in to figure out how they can inform their instruction using that information. So really good feedback, Ken. I really think sometimes, especially as we get into the school year, sometimes you just need a day to let some air out of the balloon and, you know, take, you know, take an inventory of what you have right now, where you're headed. So yes, we'll build that into those days as well.
Yeah, and I know personally, arguably, those are some of the most productive P D days for me. And then, you know, with all the competency work going on, I think that's just such a critical thing, is to allow time for departmental collaboration. So thank you. If there are no other questions or feedback, we will move on to Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Thank you very much. You can probably tell by my cheery expression and just gung-ho attitude. Last couple of weeks, we have been preparing for our annual audit. Well, this is kind of something that I've been dealing with for over thirty years and we know exactly what they want. It's always a lot of work for us in the finance office, Sarah Fell and Payroll, Pro Bratton and Accounts Payable to get together. Today was the first day. Things are working out very well. We're giving them all the information that they need in an accurate fashion. We will have a surplus, and this is a year that, because we passed a warrant article a couple of meetings ago, that you will be able to make a decision on whether or not you want to retain any unassigned fund balance up to five percent of the assessed valuation. So maybe we can, once I get that number and it's a firm number, maybe we'll have a little conversation at the board level to discuss if we want to do that and what we may want to target with that funds, those funds to get done sooner than later over the summertime, over the course of the year. Could be safety and security issues, could be something else. So in addition to that, I could have done this under committee reports, but I kind of want to give it a little more due than just committee reports. Last Friday, I went to the Town Center Committee, and their, their main purpose for us is they want us to complete the sidewalk on O'Gara Drive. Well, everybody's been down O'Gara Drive. You need, we need to do a lot more than just complete the sidewalk, right? Because the sidewalks there, that's in total disrepair, and it dovetails into the Merrimack High School complex master plan. Where we want to repave O'Gara, we want to redo the sidewalk, we want to put granite curbing in that actually has a reveal to it as opposed to the Cape Cod berm that you can just drive right over. We want to pull guardrails off. This is all part of the plan that the Town Center Committee has seen, the School District Planning and Building Committee has seen. And shortly, when everybody gets back and it's September, we'd like to unveil that to the, to the school board. It's basically a stage one plan. The first domino to fall was, as everybody knows, Brentwood fell. Now that's gone. So that is an area that we're going to show what we'd like to do with that. And then we really need to do a complete sidewalk reconstruction of all the way down O'Gara Drive, all the way to Babu's Lake Road. And we absolutely need to repave O'Gara Drive itself. That, that road has been horrific and the parking lots and everything like that. So we're putting together numbers. We'll have something there. So it may be something you, you want to consider. Definitely for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we'll definitely have a number for you, or maybe we want to do a little bit now and then maybe a little bit later. It all depends logistically how you want to do that. So basically, that's my update right now. I know I have some of projects won and I'll save more fun for later. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, it's so funny that you mentioned that today because I took the dog for a walk this morning around the high school with my ten-year-old. And my ten-year-old at one point goes, "Where'd the sidewalk go?" And I said, "It's a long story."
It's a long story.
But I was walking on that road today thinking, "This could look nicer."
Well, it could look nicer. You know, our plans that remove the guardrails, put granite curbing on both sides of the sidewalk so it'll stop the cars from running onto the sidewalk. If you have like an eight-inch reveal on a granite curb, car's not going anywhere over that. And then do the same thing on the other side of O'Gara, closest to the road. And then, you know, put in some, maybe some trees, some plantings, you know? And then there are some lights, some telephone poles that we do own, that we would definitely like to bury those utilities and have it look nice. Kind of like the entry to the, to the middle school. Because I remember when we first built the middle school, we didn't have any plans when we started that. But one of the things that I insisted upon is I don't want to see any wires going up to that building. And I think it really, it doesn't really hit you until you know there are no wires and then you say, "Wow, doesn't this look nice?" That's what we want from Merrimack High School. We want the kids to come in and say, "Wow, this, this kind of looks nice." We're not looking for Taj Mahal. We're not looking for Bedford High School. We're not looking for marble waterfalls, marble waterfalls or statue of Bill, you know, just kind of. I cut that out, Bill. I know, I know, I know. And but, you know, we, we just want it, we want, we want it to be such that people are going to drive there and just kind of take pride in what they're looking at. And I think that helps with a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the attitudes and the educational experiences when, when people can look at a structure, look at an entrance, and they can kind of say, "This is really well done." You know, I know when Southern Hampshire University did their redo, because they spent a lot of money on that, all of a sudden, it went from just a college to like, "Whoa, this is a college." I mean, and it was really something else. We don't want to go that far because that's a lot of taxpayer money. But we want to do something that's prudent, that's going to give us the most bang for our buck, and it's going to really kind of elevate the stature of the high school from an aesthetic standpoint. And more importantly, well, just as importantly, from a, from a functional standpoint, because there's a lot of traffic issues there, as everybody knows.
And safety. Safety. The kids walking from the dirt lot, there should be a sidewalk.
That's, that's right. Absolutely. But if we do what we think we may do, that dirt lot may go away because it's going to be parking closer to the building if we utilize the Brentwood property for such, which could be part of the plan, but I don't want to give it away yet. Keep it under wraps, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Moving on to school board update. Not, it's been a quiet summer. There's been, starting the conversation about preparing a budget schedule, so that information will be coming in the next couple of months. And then, of course, initiatives for the budget. You'll be hearing tonight about our goal-setting meeting that we had this summer, which was very productive and looking forward to getting a lot of those initiatives underway. And, you know, patting ourselves collectively on the back for the work that we have done already, which is, thanks to our admin team, has been pretty extensive the last year or so. So beyond that, it's been pretty quiet and looking forward to getting things going again in a few weeks. And so we will move on to student representative update.
Good evening, everyone. So recently, me and my friend, at the last meeting, we talked about open campus and you guys said, "Oh, let's go." Me and him should go through principal. So me and Finn went up to the principal and we talked about open campus. We had a meeting with him and I took some notes and would like to tell you guys all about it. So after talking to Mr. Claire, we heard that we were quite glad that he wanted this to happen. He was very open about it, though this type of open campus is seen to be more further in the future. And we thought of some solutions where we can open up more boundaries, like slowly opening up to an open campus. So some solutions we made up was to open up the outdoors, giving students more freedom. To do that, we thought of bringing in picnic tables at the front, which would be a good start since the office is close by. Another solution that is going to be implemented, I'm pretty, I'm not sure if Mr. Claire said anything about it, but it's late arrival and early release, which is opening up to students, I believe, this year. Yes, or seniors. Just seniors? I think it's juniors and seniors, I believe, since it's like for cars. And then this means that students that have a free period, either the beginning of the school day or the end of the school day, can choose to arrive late or leave early. We also are making it where students must get this signed by parents and making sure that students know if you have an early release or a late arrival, you are expected not to be in school and should be at home. And let's say that students do sign it and want to stay at school. They must let the office know that, "Oh, we're staying at school and..."
I think, I think a lot of that has to do with, they need to know who's in the building for emergency purposes.
For safety. Exactly. Like any possible, you know, emergencies, like, you know, recent problems.
So you, you and Finn are working on this?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Finn came to see me the other day. Him and I become best buddies. Yeah, right.
Talking about the...
Parking lot attendant.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Awesome. All right, and that's about really it for Mr. Claire's meeting. Other than that, class of two thousand twenty-five is having another car wash fundraiser at Burger King Exit Eleven on August nineteenth, twelve-thirty through five. That's about it. Thank you, guys.
Really nice job with those conversations. I think these are great positive changes and, I mean, really fall in line with what a lot of high schools in the state are doing. So the fact that we're not, I think, I think it's time, for sure.
Ken, if I could, I was, I was going to ask if that's more, if that's more the norm than not the norm as far as some sort of open campus and whatnot.
That's been my experience. Every school district I've worked in has had some type of open campus.
I was talking to Bill when I went to Chumps at High School back in, yeah. When I went to Chumps at High School back in the day, back in the seventies, I thought we had an open campus and Bill says, "No, that wasn't the case, Matt. You were just leaving school."
That's true. That's true.
You had your own version of it.
Me and my friends in my Camaro. I was like, "Wow, okay."
Go ahead, Lori.
So one of the things, because, you know, like you have to begin with the end in mind, which you're, which you're doing, but the planning and building committee have discussed like the parking lot a lot in having numbered spaces, maybe. So seniors would, if they had late arrival, because right now, if they have late arrival, they're parking wherever, you know? So there's, it's, it's like you get this great opportunity, but now you don't have a parking spot. So we, you know, it has been, there has been conversations about, you know, how we can make this work and it's going to be, you know, probably a three- to five-year plan. But I appreciate the thoughts and trying to get what we can right now. So picnic tables, what can we do? Frisbees, you know, at lunchtime, that kind of thing.
Well, towards the front of the entrance, we're going to create some open space. That's, that's part of the whole plan. So, you know, that, that, that can be. And if we ever build a central office, there's two buildings that are prime for some open space that could be utilized in such a fashion. Said, if we, when we do that, I should say.
And I'll ask Steve Claire to send you a memo to make sure you understand what's, what he has planned with the student.
Great. Great. Thanks, Sean. All right, moving on to old business and an update on school board and administration goal-setting meeting. Sure, so we received, and it's in the meeting materials that you can find online, the summary of the really productive sit-down we had with our partners at Primex, kind of reviewing what has been done and checking the boxes off of last year's goals and then adding to them and creating new goals. And overall, you know, as you can see from the summary, there were a lot of things that we did last year and a lot of goals that we achieved. Many are works in progress. But overall, yeah, it was a very productive day. So in terms of, do you want me to go over the new ones or I can go over the new ones for you? Sure. Oh, okay. So as far as new goals that were created, which were, you know, again, a collaboration between the five of us, our administrative team and Primex, we created a goal category number one, which is create dynamic relationships between the school district and community through clear and consistent communication. And I think we can all agree that that's one of the things we hear from a lot of people in town is just communication, which is crazy because we live in a time where you would think communication would be so accessible, but there's still just information that slips through the cracks. So that is very much on our, in the forefront of our goals this year to just create either a committee or a policy or policies that will allow for, you know, things like transition days and the first days of school and what those schedules look like to get that to all the people that it needs to get to. Goal category number two, which is kind of a continuation from our goal meeting last year, the pathways to graduation program, which really kicked off with the creating of that position, our Director of Alternative Pathways and E L Os, Mr. Harley Hall, who's often running, creating that program over at the high school. And so really digging into that and starting to establish what those programs look like, what those pathways look like, and hopefully, hopefully allowing for all students to achieve the education that they deserve and the education that they need. Goal category number three, improve our learning outcomes by ensuring our instruction is responsive to the varied needs of our student population. This was another one that was continuing on from last year, a little bit more thoroughly thought out and realized. So again, making sure that what we are teaching is connecting with the students in a way that will allow them to continue with their education. So, and then goal category number four, which was a big one, and I think I was on this committee, having facilities and equipment that are safe, secure, clean, healthy, current, and appropriate for meeting the educational needs of staff, of students and staff. Kind of goes under what Matt was just talking about with the planning and building committee, you know, looking at our buildings, our resources, and are they right for our students? Do they need to be updated? I'm sure there's plenty of things that need work. So, you know, really kind of sitting down and making sure that those are where they need to be in order for our students to really excel. And so those are the new goals, which are, some of them are sort of developed based on current goals, but a little bit more of a focus in certain areas. And we set timelines for those. Let's see, various timelines spread out throughout the school year. Again, and we've assigned certain leadership team committee members to those goals to oversee them and receive regular updates on them as well. So we're really excited to continue with what we've started, to continue improving and to continue working on the things that we think are important for our district and to make sure that the Merrimack School District is really at the forefront of education in New Hampshire. So, and I will allow for elaboration if I missed anything. I'm sure there is.
May I just say that, you know, the, we saw the benefit of the goal setting process for the fiscal '24 budget development. We walked forward in unity, uh, identifying those goals that were a priority. We addressed a lot of them. I think, you know, and as you alluded to, Ken, we did a spreadsheet of the goals that were articulated, the status of those, and we accomplished a lot of them. By we, I mean everyone in the system, all of us working together. And, uh, that carried through the budget committee discussions and deliberations also. And so we are moving forward with unity of understanding what our needs are, what we're doing well at, also what we need to do to improve the opportunities for students to meet the needs of staff and the needs of the community. Uh, that's where you come in as important representatives of the community. And I think we'll work out extraordinarily well in the development of future budgets also, because we know what we need to do, when we need to do it and how we're gonna do it. And that combined with the strategic plan, what I see, and we can discuss this as we get into the strategic plan, is, uh, in future goal setting meetings, we look at setting our goals in the frame, within the framework of the strategic plan that we have developed. And we will be developing over the next six to seven to eight, eight months. And so there will always be consistency in terms of the understanding of what we need to do. And I think that will bode well for not only the staff and students to understand, but the community to understand the direction that we're going in, in, uh, school operations.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Lori.
Um, just something of note, um, and I sensed that day there was some confusion on our facilitators' part. Goal category number one in the new goals was not supposed to replace goal category number one for last year. It was supposed to be a new goal and it was supposed to be goal category number five. Because what has happened in our packet is last year's goal, category number one, uh, which we haven't completed, has disappeared from the packet. So, um, goal, goal category number one from last year, create and engage inclusive and collaborative district culture built on mutual trust and respect. We got a lot of things in progress, things were still working, so we don't, that's still goal number one. Two, three, and four are still in place. This goal category on creating a dynamic relationship between the school district and community through clear and consistent communication should have been goal category number five. So we can, you know, we can put our own packet together, but that, I, I don't, I, I just want to clarify, we didn't get rid of goal number one. It's still very much a part of, um, the culture and direction we want to go. And we obviously want to finish each one of those strategic objectives.
Goal number one, in my estimation, will never be finished because we're always gonna be working on it. That will be a prior to goal, priority goal every year.
Bill, is it okay with you if I reach out to Toni and ask her to revise this document? She probably has her notes from that day. And Lori, if you have other notes, I tried to write down, so goal category one on page 13, that should really be goal category number five, and it should go later in the packet. Okay.
Thank you, Lori, good catch. Uh, Naomi?
Yes, thank you, good catch. Cause I was looking at it going, I didn't think that one was one, but I didn't have the brain power to like figure out what was going on with it. I have just like a tiny little thing I wanted to point out. In goal category number two, uh, page 14, this is just kind of something I wanted to say out loud for the room is last year, one of the things we really did was we took steps that will improve reading in the district. Um, and that was one of the things that was in our goals, it was reflected in our budget process, and we did a lot of really great things with that. And I love that this year we've added math right there. Cause I know that that's a concern for a lot of families especially. And so I wanted to, to kind of highlight that for folks, that, that last year we really focused on reading. Reading is still important, we're still gonna do it, but math is also on our, uh, on our radar.
And I just wanted to add, we actually worked last year on the foundational reading skills. And so in this year's budget, I'll be bringing forth some recommendations for you to consider on the other part of the knowledge rope, which is building vocabulary and the other part of the science of reading. Because we've, we selected and implemented a terrific phonics program, um, and we have a great program for phonemic awareness, and we were already seeing great progress in that. But what we are missing, if you follow the science of reading, I don't know where you are in your, down the rabbit hole, because you can, four hours later, you're like, what did I just read? We're really still missing the knowledge building piece. So we've been looking at other resources and programs that we think might fit for Merrimack. But yes, we are adding, um, a deeper dive into math. Um, and this you'll see in, later in the meeting, we have a training for our, the new updated version of Envisions, but we still have to decide if that's the right program for us.
Yeah, and, and just to go back to what Bill was saying, I mean, this really just gives a why to everything, whether it's policy updates or programs or curriculum or, or, you know, whatever it is we do, budget planning, this, this, everything comes back to look at the goals and, and the goals are what drives the conversation. So, um, it's great that we were able to do this for a second year in a row. I hope it continues, um, because, um, it just helps with so much, so much of what we do, so. So we look forward to getting that updated. Thank you again, Lori, for finding that. And, um, we encourage our, our community, please take a look at it. Let us know what you think. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Moving on, uh, Lori has, um, some old business on future recognitions.
So at the last school board meeting, we talked about honoring Jimmy Bailey, who did like the Fourth of July parade and then did the, um, mock accident. So when I reached out to Jimmy Bailey, he said, I'm really honored, but there is a whole team of us and with the school board, um, honor everybody who's on the team, which would be Dan Bantham, Mark Rivet, and Ron Ketchy. And I said I would bring it to the board, so, um, if, um, we'd like to take a vote to, uh, add more people who have been doing the mock accident for now 27 years.
Are we voting?
I'll make a motion to add the whole team to the recognitions for the mock crash scene.
Second agenda, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye, thank you. We're looking at October, just so everyone knows.
Very much deserved.
I just want to add, I, I hope we include the sad.
Yes, sad, yes.
Just, I don't mean, I don't mean that they get recognized, I mean that they're part of the recognition. I think they very much appreciate all that that team does to make, to help them pull off this mock crash. And I know, you know, if you connect with the sad team, they'd be excited to be part of recognizing them.
Sure, sure, right, yes. Well, that's, that will be part of it too.
Great. All right, uh, this looks like start of school year information, student enrollment update. New business.
Yes, we are pleased to present you with an analysis of, uh, enrollments in comparison to what was projected, uh, in the budget process. Both Matt and I have been doing demographic analysis and enrollment projections for, for many, many years. And it always seems to be an anomaly at a particular grade level, any one particular year. This year at the kindergarten at Reed's Ferry. Now, Matt has contacted the, uh, building department and we've received, uh, some development information and occupancy information from January 1st of 2022 to the present. And the development in Reed's Ferry has been extraordinary. And so, um, that's where we want to make sure that we get as much current information about residential construction and occupancy across the entire town. Overall, uh, we will continue to, um, work on enrollment projections carefully, using cohort survival ratio technique. We also use NESDEC, the New England School Development Council. We contract with them to do enrollment analyses. But we, we sometimes will modify that or adjust that report based on what we know locally, uh, instead of just a formulaic approach to, uh, to enrollment projections. Uh, overall, I will say the projections were, were pretty close, uh, across K to 12 with a deviation of only 36 students K to 12. But as we said, uh, there was, um, somewhat unexpected, an extraordinary rate of occupancy at the, um, at Reed's Ferry. Now, we know that having done demographic analysis for many years, kindergarten is always the most uncertain and unreliable in terms of, uh, statistically correct and accurate enrollment projections based on any formulaic approach, such as the cohort survival ratio. You know, what we'll do moving forward is I've found that, um, something that's very helpful is we use a sort of a seven year, the last seven years, um, average of cohort survival ratios from one grade to the next to refine enrollment projections that we might receive from NESDEC. Uh, and I think they'll be fairly accurate, uh, continue to be fairly accurate moving forward. So that we, we know that something very unusual happened in the Reed's Ferry district, you know, which you can't predict oftentimes, uh, particularly with kindergarten, because there's no established track record. What we, what we do is we'll look at the births, the number of actual births five years earlier. We look at, um, the residential development, uh, what that means to us in terms of in migration. We look at the out migration, which, which is where the centralized registrar will pay benefits also in that we get, we'll get a little bit more real time information, a little more quickly in terms of that in migration, out migration, with a number of apartments, um, that are being constructed. We know that that won't have as intensive impact on enrollment, uh, as single family homes of three and four bedrooms. However, it, it oftentimes does have some impact in that empty nesters will move into and downscale, move into apartments. And so that's secondary development and reoccupancy of their homes. As we say, we go, you know, you go from, uh, empty nesters to now being a home with hot wheels and a swing set out in the, out in the backyard. And that's the reality of, uh, what happens in terms of housing turnover and the aging of the population and the reoccupation of existing housing stock, uh, by younger families of school age, because they do, we know that they come to communities for the school system and they benefit from excellent services from other town departments. But it is the quality of the school system that first and foremost, most attracts families. So Matt?
Do you mind if I just add in a little bit? Okay, thank you. Because, you know, as, as Bill was saying, you know, we look at cohort survival rates and everything like that and the number of live births, and we looked at the NESDEC report. And when we saw these numbers come in, specifically at Reed's Ferry School, I says, I can't believe this. I just don't believe this. So I went back and, uh, we both went back and looked at the NESDEC reports. Then we looked at an update from March and it's not showing anything as far as live births or whatever. So that's when we decided to, to contact, uh, Paul McCally, town manager. He was really helpful, hooked us up with the assessment, the assessing department. And the amount of churn or the amount of resales of hu- houses in the Reed's Ferry area staggered me. I couldn't believe the number of turnover, just in an area like Mallard Point, probably six to seven houses flipped. You know, but it's all over the place. And I think that's something that was an unintended consequence of, you know, the economy. Like Bill said, he said it, you know, people moving out, new people moving in. Instead of, you know, sports cars and tennis rackets and whatnot, you see, what would you say, big wheels, hot wheels? Hot wheels, hot wheels, and you know, it's a whole different, it's a whole different scene. I see it in my own neighborhood too. All of a sudden, there's people walking around with baby carriages. But you, but, but NESDEC doesn't pick that stuff up, they're not aware of that. They're aware of the number of building permits, but they're not aware of the, the housing shifts. So we've got to stay more in tune with what's going on, uh, through the, uh, the sales that the towns, towns collect. But then again, they don't ask the question, so how many kids do you have? Do you have a couple of babies that are gonna be in kindergarten a couple of years? I mean, they don't really collect that information. But it, it's something to be really aware of, that this just does. I've, I've never seen one grade level bounce like this in one year ever here. I know we had, back in the day when we were building the middle school, we had a couple of really large classes come through the system and they kind of skewed those enrollments, but we could follow them. They were here and they, they showed up. But this was just kind of a, a surprise from our standpoint and from even the, the people who did the report as far as enrollments go, NESDEC, so. Well, you know, go ahead, Bill.
You know, I was gonna say, one of the, one of the, um, next great frontiers of, uh, housing occupancy will be that development up by the middle school. Those are all single family homes. Now, those homes are in the Master Cola, uh, district. But we're gonna keep a careful eye on the rate of construction, because they're still very much under construction, with a few of them being occupied already, but the rate of occupancy also. So we'll, we'll keep a careful track on that and see what the impact is on MES in the future.
Questions or discussion? I know they're little, but is there any concern about space at Reed's Ferry with all these, with plus 41 students?
Uh, we do have enough space. Uh, we're gonna keep a careful eye on the, you know, the following year, the 2024, 2025, uh, school year. And we're looking at a plan, uh, won't disclose anything right now, but, uh, a plan that, uh, will address space needs, that we'll, we're looking to present to you for implementation two years from now, not next year, but a couple of years from now. And, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll lay that out very carefully for you in terms of the space capacity benefits of a plan, uh, the academic impact based on research. And, um, we'll present a, a very thorough, uh, report to you, but that's, that's down the road a ways.
Yeah, like, you know, like Bill was saying, you know, we've got this one bump this year, uh, at kindergarten at Reed's, which is very, it's, it's, it's a rarity. But I like, we'd like to kind of get another year under our belt to see if that continues in that area or moves someplace else, or what else is in store before making a decision that's gonna kind of change the, the makeup of the district from a grade level perspective, so.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna, you know, go, go too quick.
Change a bunch of things and then back to normal, yeah. I think it's a great sign for our district. I think it's a, awesome to see that many, uh, new families moving into town.
If you ever need to build another school up at the middle school, there's, there's a future, there's a future plan. I can show everybody who grades five and six elementary school right up on the hill.
There you go. Go ahead, Lori.
And I was just gonna add, uh, something that you wouldn't know is, um, there are families who left the district, who still lived, lived in Merrimack and went to private schools during COVID that are coming back. I know that personally, so, you know, you wouldn't have those statistics.
That's great. All right, uh, staffing update.
Well, we still have a number of positions that are open, and that means unfilled. Most of them are support positions. So I guess my plea to everyone in the town and beyond is if you're looking to work in an outstanding organization with lots of friendly people, in the most honorable job that you could possibly work, work at, that being a school district, uh, we're interested in having you apply for employment in our district. Uh, we have about four or five teaching positions that are still open. Most of those are in special education. We are hoping to be able to fill those prior to the beginning of the school year. But, uh, you know, we have openings for custodians, for maintenance, for food service, for paraprofessionals, title one tutors, kindergarten assistants, instructional assistants, a number in food service sector of our organization. So I would encourage anyone who's looking for employment, um, to consult our website. There's an employment section on there and we would love to have you employ, uh, employed with us and, and work with our team, because I think you'll enjoy it very, very much. We have a wonderful culture that is still developing in a very positive, trusting, respectful, supportive manner, and we look forward to your application.
All right, uh, moving on to update on opening of school.
In your packet, as I mentioned earlier, is a schedule for the professional learning for the 2023, 2024 school year, uh, starting off on Monday, August 28th, that's, uh, classroom setup day. Uh, so our teachers and tutors will be in their respective buildings, setting up their learning spaces for students. Um, our paraprofessionals do not need to report that day, but all staff reports on Tuesday, August 29th. Um, and you'll see in your packet the planned activities, uh, for each of those individual groups. Um, so our elementary teachers will have some building meetings and then they will have an Envisions training, um, as we transition from an older version of Envisions to one that is aligned to the common core, um, which I'm really excited about. We had a few teachers from each grade level K to six pilot that program last year and had some really great, uh, feedback and results. So we have, we have decided to continue with that program, at least for the next three years. So we'll have two trainers in district that day, um, to provide grade band specific training, um, at, at J Mews for about 90 minutes. at J Muse for about 90 minutes. And that is followed by a question and answer session where teachers can have, they can walk through the new online portal and ask any questions that they may have. Our Unified Arts teachers will be working with myself and probably Jason Pelletier on our EduPlanet 21 tool. We've had some new Unified Arts teachers come on board over the summer and so we need to get them acclimated to the curriculum. So some great work has been done, but it is a need for that group of people to come together. So the music, art, PE and tech ed and fax and, and things like that. And that's primarily K to eight, that work. The work at the high school will be done by departments. Our middle and high school, that will be their kickoff day with the New Hampshire Learning Initiative. They are meeting as a joint community at the Merrimack Middle School Cafeteria. And they will have a day long training where they are going to be doing some things based on the facilitator and then they'll also have some time to work in their departments or grade levels. And then on the 29th, our support staff joins us. And so of course they'll be part of the building meetings. And then as part of their contract, they have time with their supervisor on both the 29th and the 30th to review IEPs, get their Medicaid log set up and all of those necessary things to start the school year. And then on August 30th, our elementary teachers will have their first iReady training. That is also the day for our meet and greets at all of the lower elementaries as well as J Muse. So we're working around that training. Our Unified Arts teachers will participate in a responsive classroom training that is specific for special area teachers. At the middle school, they will have their building meetings in the, in the morning and then their iReady trainer will be there in the afternoon. And then our, the high school will have building and department meetings continuing to talk about what happened on August 29th. And they are also introducing a new SEL program this year called Wayfinder. I don't know if you're familiar with it. So they have a training and that, and Catherine Colburn is leading that. So we're really excited to be bringing something on board. And I know that John is probably aware of some schedule changes where they've tried to create a block of time on Thursdays. They're calling it right now an advisory or X block, where they're going to be able to use things like Wayfinder, but also provide collaboration time for the departments, which doesn't exist right now. So there really is a need for an entire department of people to get together on, on a fairly consistent basis to discuss not only the needs of students, but also their instruction. And again, Mesa will be there to be able to provide the, the training and, and setup that they need. Also in your packet is just sort of what we're planning later in the school year. On our early releases, you'll notice that what I've tried to do this year is to schedule the mandatory trainings on those day, those days. So we have some things that we're required to do. Last year, we purchased Vector. We transitioned away from Primex to a more robust professional learning tool. And so they offer a lot of these mandatory trainings. They're not quite two hours, but as I had mentioned earlier, when, when Ken talked about giving teachers time to get together, we're going to try to do both on those early release days. You might have an hour of, of a vector training. We also know that there are some topics that are pretty sensitive, so we will offer some in-person trainings for, for folks as well, thinking specifically about our active shooter trainings and suicide prevention. So as you go through, you'll see that we've planned for those different practices and trainings. We do have two full days on October 6th. We will have another iReady training. New Hampshire Learning Initiative is coming back to work with the middle and high school. And then again, on January 26th, we will have a second Envisions training as well as continued work with the New Hampshire Learning Initiative. So as I mentioned, this is subject to change based on the needs of, of, of our community. But I, I really feel like this is, it's great to have at least a framework planned out for the school year.
Can I just, first of all, I want, I want to thank all of you for the support that you've given to us in the revision of our calendar, school calendar, the last couple of years. Couple of years ago, if I recall correctly, I don't believe we had any early release days. If we did, there were minimal. And you, with your support, we've put now, I believe it's five early release days into the calendar. If you ask the staff what they need more of, it's time, time for, for professional development. And Amy has done an outstanding job in understanding the needs of students, therefore understanding what the teachers need to meet those needs and, and planning a comprehensive PD program. And, and that's what's behind the construction of a school calendar. Some people think, well, you just take the calendar from one year, carry it over to the next year. Most important thing is we take a look at what we need to accomplish as an organization. First and foremost, focusing on students, what are their needs and what are the staff needs and how do we configure the calendar to make sure that we are able to meet those needs? And so thank you to you, Amy, thank you to you for such a great job and, and all your support and, and supporting those early release days because they're extraordinarily important.
Go ahead, Lori.
Just want to affirm what you said. Our teachers, you know, they work a lot and anybody who says that a teacher doesn't work outside their contract hours hasn't been a teacher. But we are contractually obligated to honor their contracts. And yet we also are required to do a lot of these trainings. And so I, I guess I just want our community to understand that these early release days are not just for teachers to blow off that they get out. They're working till the end of their contract hours. They're working, they're learning, they're doing mandatory trainings. And it is part of their contract to do these things. And so we honor them, but we also honor the contract. And so it's not a matter of just wanting to give them free time. These are essential parts of meeting the needs of students and we need to do that with these early release days.
Yeah, and that's such an important point because I know I hear in the community, you know, the early releases can be tough, especially for younger kids. If you've got kids at the elementary schools, you know, working work schedules and things like that, it's tough. And I, I'm there, I have a kid in the elementary school, so I get it. But as Lori pointed out, you know, th- these are trainings that have to happen. My one suggestion, the mandatory trainings, I know, I don't know if it's too late now. I almost feel like a lot of these mandatory, like I see the suicide prevention one happening in March. You know, does it make sense to have that maybe a little earlier in the school year? I don't know. You know, again, I don't want to mess with your whole calendar because it looks great, but that would be maybe like a tiny little suggestion is getting the mandatory trainings done earlier, especially for new, I mean, teachers who have done this for 20 years probably could recite the trainings by heart. But for our new teachers through the district, of which we have quite a few, it might be worthwhile to at least consider that just going forward. So, but again, I don't want to mess up your whole calendar because it looks great. Just something to think about.
Yeah, the suicide prevention training, this past year, you know that the RSA says you have to have it in the, and we had it in January. So that's why I wanted to have it. I couldn't have it on January 26th because they had the whole day, so the next early release. But I, I certainly could look at changing.
No, I think that makes sense. I, that, yeah.
That, that was the reasoning behind it. And just so you know, our new staff, they do the bullying and harassment training as part of their onboarding.
Oh, the orientation, okay.
They will have what we have scheduled for the rest of the staff on September 22nd. They will have already done that as part of their onboarding.
Great. And as a Unified Arts teacher, I very much appreciate thinking of Unified Arts teacher when planning professional development and I'm sure they will as well. It's great to, to know that they can actually do something that applies to what they do. So, so thank you for thinking of them. Any other discussion? Oh, sorry, Naomi, go ahead.
This isn't discussion and it's on the minor side, but it doesn't feel minor if you're a parent. I really, really appreciate that this year, the meet and greets at the elementary schools that J Muse is offset from the ones at the lower elementary schools. I ran into that last year where we had two meet and greets at the same time and it was very frustrating as a parent. So I wanted to highlight that so that any parents in the audience know that, you know, you guys are listening and improving and we really appreciate that you're doing that.
I know that Dr. Rowe and Mrs. Fowler were very intentional about doing that when we were setting the meet and greets. She, I'm sure received that same feedback. So she said from the beginning, when are you going to do yours? And I'm going to do mine before or after. So thank you for that and pointing that out. And we do hope that new families come out and we, you know, the teachers are excited to, to meet the families and the new students. So those are always great times. I've had lots of meet and greets in my day and there's always that excitement, the buzz about the beginning of the year.
Awesome. Sounds like that communication goal is running. That's great. Any other discussion? Then we move on to school bus safety video.
Well, I'm pleased to say that this Thursday, I will be working with our school bus contractor, in particular, Michelle Bancroft. And we're going to put together a school bus safety cable program that will air before the opening of the school year. I want to thank the cable staff, Merrimack Cable TV, they have been absolutely fabulous to work with. This is something I've done in prior years. I think it's very helpful. We'll be covering school safety topics, bus safety, such as the 10-foot zone around the bus, which is an area that is of minimal, minimal visibility by the driver. And it's very important for students to be aware of that, when to cross the street, particularly with traffic from the rear and oncoming traffic. I'll wait until the child gets the okay from the school bus driver. We'll talk about items that might fall under a bus and talking to the parents and children who might watch this video about the danger of trying to get something like that, that they just let it go, okay? And we'll take care of it later. We'll talk about the, the issue of compartmentalization, which the National Transportation Safety Board for years used to call a non-aggressive environment. I love that bureaucratic term. And what compartmentalization refers to is the intentional height of a school bus seat, the spacing of the seats and the, the padding on the seats, all, all designed to absorb to some extent of a child lurching forward in the event of an oncoming accident with a school bus. We'll talk about seat belts on buses. Why oftentimes there are not seat belts on the bus, particularly, particularly lap belts. And we'll talk about the, the issue of the fulcrum analysis and the, with a lap belt in the event of an accident, the child's upper torso will snap forward, presenting great knee in terms of head or neck injuries and what's just called the fulcrum effect. And that's why I don't have lap belts. And, and why aren't there on many buses across the United States, full harness seat belts? Talk about the emergency exits that exist in school buses to make sure parents and students are aware of those. And we'll talk about what we do and are required to do, certainly for school bus safety training. So, you know, we're looking for, forward to a, a very enjoyable and informative bus video and a cable program that, I once again, I want to thank STA for their willingness to do it. We're going to do it onsite with a, an actual bus and thank the cable staff because they've, they've been sensational in working with us. And so if there's anything else that you feel you'd like to have covered with respect to school bus safety, please let me know. We'll be glad to incorporate that into the program.
Is there any way we can get Matt to demonstrate the what not to do stuff for the video?
Oh, I can definitely be the problem.
That's my only request is, yeah.
I do have one request and, and maybe you're, you already do this, but it seems like in town, we have a couple of problem areas, especially the beginning of school, of people going around stopped buses. I know our police department is really good about being in our school zones around school to remind people to slow down, but do they step up patrols in areas like DW Highway, Turkey Hill, places where there are repeated violations of going around those buses when they're stopped?
We will cover that and I will be also, Matt and I will be talking with the police chief also about the fact that we're not willing to accept anyone going around a school bus or passing in an oncoming basis a stop sign.
Yeah. Michelle Bancroft from STA has been very vocal with the police department about that and they have come to park themselves in certain locations and designated areas in order to, to try and halt that type of behavior, which quite frankly, I don't understand. You see, you see flashing lights, you stop because you never know what can come. Everybody's seen kids in parking lots. I mean, they can dart all over the place. Same thing with buses. It's just something that I won't tolerate, we won't tolerate. And Michelle has let Brian Leveque and the police department and Matt Talton know every single instance where that has happened. And the police department has been responsive to it.
And maybe that's something you could cover in your show. Just a reminder, you know, just those drivers ad 101 things about the difference between a divided by a median road versus just because there's a, a turn lane there in the middle, that is not a divided road. And, you know, all those places that you are supposed to stop where it can be confusing. Now, Turkey Hill, there's no excuse. I've seen it happen there, but there is no excuse for it on Turkey Hill. But, you know, places like upper, on the north end of DW Highway and places like that, it might be a good reminder for everyone who's been driving a long time where you actually have to stop.
Yeah, we will provide that because, you know, the research over the years has shown that 95% of tragedies associated with school transportation when children are off the bus and involve a vehicle in some violation.
I was going to say to the sign outside of the police department, they could say, you know, school's starting, remember school safety, please do not pass the buses.
Our resident bus driver, Naomi.
I was gonna say, having been a bus driver, I haven't told you guys officially yet, I'm actually going to be a bus driver again this year, which the only, the, not relevant to this discussion, but I'll say it now anyway, the only impact that has on my function here is that should we need to vote on a new contract with STA, I will have to recuse myself because I am now an employee of them. I was wondering if you had considered talking about behavior expectations on the bus as part of this.
That's one of the topics and I'll, I'm gonna have Michelle Bancroft talk about the importance of, of behavior and importance of a, a driver needing to pay attention to the road.
That's, um, one of the things I encountered when both of my kids started kindergarten is a lot of parents are nervous about their kids going on the bus. They, I don't know if they remember bad experiences they had on the bus or, or things like that. But as someone who, I was a bus driver many years ago, I was very confident putting my kids on the bus because I know how much training they give those drivers and I know how much attention they pay to, to making it as safe as possible. And the more people whose children ride the bus, all of our traffic issues around, say, Thornton's Ferry would start to improve because there's fewer cars on the road. Like, oh, like, like in snowstorms, people are always really concerned and they go to drive their buses. I would, I'm far more comfortable having driven a bus, way more comfortable putting my kid on a bus in a snowstorm than I am in a car because the bus drivers are trained and the buses are so much heavier than the cars, they're less likely to skid. And there's just a number of reasons why I'm a huge supporter of buses.
It's the safest way to and from school, height of the chassis, the weight of the vehicle, the construction. And so, you know, we're, we're excited to be doing this. You know, with respect to behavior, we all know that our children over the years, as they've grown up, have, have come home sometimes with some new vocabulary words having learned on the school bus. And, you know, that's always going to be a, a reality. But the importance of the behavior is that we need the driver's attention always focused on the road. So we will definitely be covering that.
All right, looking forward to that. Moving on, update on leadership retreat.
Well, have Amy join me on this one? We had two very engaging days on our leadership retreat. Boy, sorry. We had two very engaging days on our leadership team retreat on August 3rd and August 4th. Day number one, we had Mark Dolan from the New Hampshire School Board Association facilitating a very active discussion for about five hours on developing a strategic plan. And we use that as the kickoff for the work that we're going to be doing between now and I would say January, February timeline, timeframe for putting together a strategic plan. We'll be engaging with you periodically on our progress and receiving your input and input from the community. Day two, we had Dr. Kalise Warnham, who I'm, I'm familiar with and from work in other school districts that I've been in, who was a cultural proficiency coach, working with us on addressing student microaggressions. This is in response to our discussions with middle school, high school administration and staff about the interactions of students and how we can make them more, more respectful, more understanding, less aggressive. We want to make sure that, that they are appropriately, that, that the conversations are appropriate with respect to any bias, racial, religious. respect to any bias, racial, religious, ethnic, cultural. And as I said, that emanated from discussions with, in particular, the high school administration last year. The leadership team has responded extraordinarily positively to Dr. Warnham. She is an outstanding, outstanding coach and presenter, and we're going to continue with her periodically throughout this school year and beyond. And Amy?
I would just add, part one about the strategic planning, I know that we tried to do this last year, and we put it on our goals, and like all great plans, it fell apart, right? And so now that we've landed with Mark, the next step is to create a committee. So we had had some commitment from, what our goal was to have representation from each school. So if there was a community member that was willing to, say, you know, represent Reed's Ferry and now your students at J Mews, you know, look to those. We'll be sending out an email to let communication around when that committee will be meeting, setting up those meetings and making sure that we have representation K to 12. Strong interest in the administration, as you saw from Mark's write-up, you'll see some of the Post-it notes and the strengths and opportunities that we recognize, but we're really excited about the next step. It is similar to the process that we've done with Primax, and it was interesting, as someone who was part of both of those activities, that the administrative team is very much aligned with where you are. It is very, it's wonderful to see, you know, that they really are invested in a lot of the same things that we've talked about. And then as far as Dr. Warnham, it was, I think, one of the takeaways that I had is how do we look at the needs of students and identify what is the skill gap? What are the kinds of things that students need to know? And also, what are the kinds of things that teachers need to be thinking about when they see student behavior? Because sometimes it really isn't what you might expect related to, you know, noncompliance. It really is that students don't have the perspective of the other students. So how do we recognize what students need from us as the educators? But then as they mature and the expectations increase, how do we hold them accountable for the things that may happen that, or impact or hurt their classmates? So it has, you know, many of you, you know, you've all had opportunities to work in a school or be part of a school community. There is that really fine line between providing support to students and holding them accountable at the same time, and then engaging parents in that process. Because I've been a building principal, when you have to call a parent and let them know something that their student said, it can be a really tough conversation. And so you want to be able to put in some real instruction, and I think Dr. Warnham has done a really great job. As Bill said, she is a wonderful speaker, has a lot of knowledge. She's worked in schools both in Massachusetts and around New England. She's been a teacher, an administrator, so she has some really great perspective to offer us.
And that's, I think, such an important thing to consider is, you know, having consistent, clear expectations of student behavior, but then also have an understanding of that student. And it's a tricky line to walk sometimes, so it's not enough conversation around that stuff. You know, we often label kids, and it's, they go so much deeper than that, so. It sounds great. And I was going to ask too, if the conversations aligned with our goal-setting meeting too. It's funny that you brought that up. Discussion? Great. Looking forward to see the results of this throughout the next, throughout the year. Moving on down to summer projects, Matt.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, Bill and I were having a conversation a couple of weeks ago, maybe a couple of months ago, I don't know, time flies when you're having fun, right? And basically about when we first, you know, brought technology into a school system. After we did that initial push to get the servers, the wiring, you remember, Bill remembers Net Day 2000 where we had community members come into the buildings and actually string cable through ceilings and everything like that. Organized chaos, you know, organized chaos. But after it was done, the first time, everybody said, "Oh, my gosh, thank goodness, we're all done." And it's kind of like, well, no, you've just kind of started. You're not going to have the same computer 15 years from now. People had that expectation that once we got to a certain point, we were finished. No, it was only the beginning. And I just want to thank the board for recognizing that fact, that we have to keep the refresh going, we have to keep things current, we have to have replacement equipment that are, that's relevant and appropriate for all grade levels and for all kids. So I just want to do a little overview of what Jason Pelletier, our technology director, and his crew of technicians, all a bunch of superstars, did over the summertime. They had over 230 computers that they swapped out for new, so they deployed 230 brand-new computers. They oversaw the installation of 50 classroom projectors that were replaced. They had 18 interactive panels going into classrooms. They took four network closets, three of which they just completely gutted them from switches to wires and everything, and did a total rebuild on them, which is significant in and of itself because once you take those things apart, did this wire go over here? I don't know where this wire went. At least that's the way I looked at it. When I saw them kind of crouched in the hallway at MES one day. But they also, we also purchased a new sand storage area network, which we bought the first one around 15 years ago, and that was another thing where it says, "Oh, thank goodness, that's done." No, it's not done. That's going to start to fail in five years. In fact, that's a long lifespan for a big storage area network, which gives us redundancy and allows us to virtualize all the programs we have and store the data in different locations so we don't have to worry about backup. And we do have cloud backup on pretty much everything that we have. They installed some VM server clusters, and around over 60 classrooms had their connectivity upgraded or fixed. In some classrooms, perhaps the Wi-Fi wasn't optimal or something like that. So they went through the entire district and they identified around 60 classrooms that needed an upgrade. So that was quite a project for the summertime, and we haven't recognized them. But, you know, their work is because the infrastructure we've built with finally getting the number of technicians that we needed and the tech director himself guiding them and coming up with a plan that was supported by the board, supported by the budget committee, and ultimately supported by the community. So that was a good job by all, and we just want to say thank you.
Discussion, questions?
I would just add that I'm very grateful for the voters in supporting this.
Absolutely.
And it was one of the things Niaske brought up in our accreditation, and they require an ongoing refurbishment, replacement, and an upgrading plan for every school they accredit. So it's a major part of that accrediting process, even if we weren't using it so much, which we are. So it satisfies both the need in the classroom and the stature of the district.
You know, many years ago, we identified that on an annual basis, technology would be the largest increasing element of the budget, other than salary increases, to stay current and relevant. And so one of the important pieces of information that we will always provide to you is the number of devices we have, the deployment of them, the aging of them, and the replacement cycle, so that you, the budget committee and their voters, know what we need to do and why we need to do it from a new acquisition or replacement perspective, perspective with respect to technology. Not only devices, but as Matt has frequently alluded to, the infrastructure, which is every bit as important, if not more important, because that allows us to do the great things that the teachers are doing with the students.
All right. Let's talk about date for first meeting in September. So in September, Mondays are a little wacky because our normal first date, well, really just the first Monday, is Labor Day, so we're unable to meet that day. So is the concern space, is there a concern with having a room available for meeting? Or do we know?
Well, I think there is an alternative, it's just we prefer to have it Tuesday the 5th or wait until next Monday, in which case, you know, we have-
Again.
It's summer, you're out of the habit.
Yeah.
You know, I'm new to this job. It's a question of whether or not you want to have it on a Tuesday, the 5th, or do you want to wait until the next week on 11th? In which case, we'd have, you know, a Monday night meeting two weeks in a row. So it's up to your-
The 5th is the first day of school for me, so could I put in a vote for the 11th?
I'm indifferent, so if that's-
I personally prefer the 11th.
Naomi?
I actually have no preference. I'm curious, from administration's point of view, if there's one better than the other for, like, updating us on anything, or if you're going to be nuts because it's the first full week of school too, that's cool.
It really won't make a difference to us.
Cool. Is that something we vote on? Or we just schedule it? Vote on it? All right. Do I have a motion to hold our first meeting of the school year on Monday, September 11th?
So moved.
Have a second? All those in favor? So we will have meetings take place on the 11th at 6 o'clock and then again on the 18th at 6 o'clock.
All right, thank you.
Other new business? Just a tiny piece of new business from me. Merrimack, for the first time in a while, will have a representative at the delegate assembly. I have registered for that in October, October 14th, which is a day where school board members from around the state get together and vote on policy and RSA language and just general discussions. So I encourage fellow board members, if there's anything you'd like me to bring up or discuss or change, we can certainly have that conversation. Looking forward to it. I've never been to that, up in Concord. Any other new business? Moving on to policies. Go down the list or should we just take them as they are altogether? What do we think?
Go down the list.
Go down the list.
Because there are different actions required for different policies.
Approval of student transportation services.
I just have one thing on this one, on page one of two, when it says, "Conduct on the bus," and it said, it's in the first paragraph, and it said, "said suspension." I didn't know if that was an illegal term or should it say "the suspension?"
I don't think it's a legal term.
Just referring to the previous sentence.
Right.
Yeah.
Could it be changed?
Could it be changed to "any"? "Any suspension shall not begin."
Where is this that we're looking at?
Underneath "student conduct on school buses" in the red. Page one.
You can put that because I don't consider that to be a material change to the intent of the language. So if you want to put "any" in there or this, you know, any or some other descriptor.
It is referring to the previous sentence. Does that affect the language at all?
It either needs to be "said" or "this" or something referring back to the previous sentence.
Right.
So you could say, "This suspension shall not begin."
Right, that's what I was looking for.
All right.
Yeah.
So your approval vote, since this is approved, will be as amended.
As amended, okay.
So I make a motion that we approve the student transportation services as amended.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. SS 500.
The homeless student policy, as you know, all of these, particularly with the red ink, have been reviewed and revised by our legal counsel to meet statutory requirements. This is the second review. There have been, to this point, no comments. Policy from the public.
Yeah, and this update is extensive. If you're in the community and haven't had the chance to take a look at it, it's pretty, we were not doing the things we should be doing, so now we are.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's a reflection of some of the aging of the policies we have. And I've got to thank you, I've got to thank Sandy for diligence in terms of making sure that we are up to date with our policies.
And just to point out, the second policy, JFABE, which is referred to in JFABD, is a new policy, which we didn't have at all. So, you know, a couple of years ago, 2016, they took students in foster care out of the homeless RSA. So that is something that needs to happen, and we received Title I funds. So these two policies go hand in hand, and I had asked Sandy to bump them to the top of the list, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, like, this is not an exciting part of the meeting, but I think that until I was on the board, I didn't realize how much of this was out of date. And I think it is some of the most important work that we're doing currently. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of important, but at the board level, this is something that has been so important. So I'm grateful for your team really helping with that because, again, not exciting, but so necessary.
Yeah, and for something that may not affect a large population, but it's so important.
So there's no action actually needed. It's just that know that there have been no public comments on these, that they meet all statutory requirements, and we'll move forward through the approval, through the approval process, okay?
And the only thing that I brought up last time about this one is, we have had, with McKinney-Vento, you absolutely have to let them in right away. But in the media, there has been twice recently, students that were not students who enrolled in, went to school, they were adult people that looked young or whatever. So just if, you know, someone doesn't feel comfortable taking them immediately, that we hold off for records, which it's, I read it, it says, "The district policy." But, you know, just so we know, like, someone comes in, "McKinney-Vento, I slept in my car last night, I'm here." If they look like they're 25, maybe we say, "You know what, you're not coming today." You know, we were going to just do a little more background check.
We will always be cautious.
And I think having a district registrar is perfect for that scenario. And once this, you know, once you adopt it, we'll talk with Patty Townsend about it because she'll be interfacing with all of those new folks. Because you're right, some of those cases, it's totally creepy.
Yeah, and some of the stories, like, you know, the woman was a social worker, so I don't know if she was going to be writing a book, so she went into high schools, but she was there for, like, eight or nine days, I mean, before they finally said, "You don't belong here."
You know, the administrative assistants in the schools over the years have done an outstanding job in the registration process of students. We wanted to make, bring more consistency, and that's something that you'll hear throughout the year from us, is bringing more consistency to what we do. And Patty is very tenacious in chasing down information. And I want to say that the individual administrative assistants in the schools were also, but we have one person now making sure that everything is applied uniformly across the, across the district. Now, the last policy that we have is actually the first reading of the suicide prevention and response, once again, reviewed and revised and updated by our legal counsel. So what you usually do is waive the first reading of this policy since we don't read through the entirety, goes on the record, and we open it up for public comment.
I move that we waive the first reading of the suicide prevention and response policy?
I was going to just make one suggestion to it. Okay, okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, no, wait, discussion.
So where we say, this would be the second paragraph, the bullet point, we said, recognizes that physical and mental, I added emotional and social health, because in our goals meeting, we talked a lot about emotional and social health, so I thought it should say, "Physical, mental, emotional, and social health."
Which pulse?
Suicide.
Oh, okay.
So you would, that's agreeable with the entire board? You waive the first reading as amended?
I think we have to vote.
Yeah, vote on the change, right? All right, do we have a motion to accept the change?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the change with the amended language, yes.
Do we have a second? Second, all those in favor? Aye, 500.
I have some questions about this one.
Yeah, go ahead.
One thing I just wanted to say for transparency-
One thing I just wanted to say for transparency is that, like you mentioned on the other one, there's some, some changes that don't affect the, they don't affect the intention of the policy. I didn't get a chance to review this one before it came to the board, which sometimes I do and Sandy and I take care of those things. I want to, the, there's like the headers are inconsistent. And like the way the lists of things under the sections are bulleted are inconsistent. And I love to go through and fix that kind of stuff, so that's something I'm going to do next week. It bothers me.
That's why we love you.
I appreciate the work that you've put into that with Sandy.
And then, what were my other questions? Oh, it says under, on the first page, section A, the suicide prevention plan and biennial review. The superintendent or their designee has developed a committee to review a district suicide prevention plan to include guidelines, protocols and procedures with the objectives of prevention, risk assessment, intervention and response to youth suicide events. And I was curious about this committee.
We are actually going to review and recon, kind of reconstitute the committee in the review session?
I was just going to say, how it has happened in the past is our Director of Wellness, Fern Sidon, who is now Sarah Perotto. They will meet with the school counselors at every level K to 12 and the social, emotional learning specialists. And they go through all of that. And then Fern brought the plan to the district committee and then she came here to present the plan to you. So when you look at that, I think that process will continue. We do have a new Director of School Counseling at the high school. And I, they, you know, I imagine that they will continue to work on that. As you can imagine, this, it happens at the elementary school, but it happens much more frequently at the middle and high school. So she, Fern, worked very closely with those school counselors. And I imagine that that will happen, as well as the administration, and I'm sure Sarah will do the same. And I just also wanted to add that on part B, where it says the district suicide prevention coordinator. That is our, I think it, you know, but I assume it would be the Director of Wellness.
Yes, that was actually one of my next questions, was what goes in that highlighted part right there? Perfect. And then my, my last question was, on the third page, under five dissemination, it says student handbooks, as well as the districts and each school website, will include, and the first bullet is a copy of this policy. And I was wondering about putting the whole policy in the handbooks. The reason, like, what is the purpose of putting the whole policy in the handbook? Because I remember reading the, especially the elementary school handbooks last year. And I think we, and there was a lot of like, things in them that got like, two lines of something. And then there were a bunch of just copy pasted policies in the back. And I wanted to approach putting things in the handbook intentionally with an eye towards accessibility and readability for parents and students. And I was wondering if saying, we're going to put this policy word for word in the handbooks is actually helpful? Or if it would be more helpful to have some sort of condensed information and then a direction on where they could get the policy?
It's interesting that you mention that because just this afternoon, you know, we have forwarded all of our handbooks to our legal counsel for review. That was one of the comments that came back from our legal counsel just, just this afternoon is that we make our policies more accessible in their entirety to, through the handbook. So we're going to work on doing that.
So the only thing I would say is, you know, when we have this suicide plan. So we have a student that was brought to a guidance counselor and the student has made some verbal warnings and the school district what the actual plan is. So, you know, if, so we know the student has been cutting. So we're going to require the student to have a medical, you know, they have to go to, to a medical professional to be examined and before they come back to school, you know, we, so that's part of the plan. I get that, but it's just, you know, I just want people to know that that would be the protocols that we would follow.
Yeah, because this policy is different from the district suicide prevention plan, which is where you would find that protocol for what happens exactly when a student.
Right, right, right. And if that could be maybe even attached or, you know, so people know this is, because what happens sometimes is, I think sometimes maybe someone's going to have something like, well, you know, I think they're fine. They just said, you know, we're here, this is what you must do.
Did you have a follow up?
I did. I get why having all of the policies in the handbook would, would cover us legally. The language in many of the policies, I don't feel is accessible. It's very legalese, a lot of them, and even I have a hard time parsing it sometimes. And I wonder, so I, so I, I wonder why they recommend that? And I would like to hear more about it because, because my, my biggest, as a parent, if I'm handed a handbook that's this thick, that has all this stuff, I'm not going to read it.
Even if they sign the paper saying they read it?
No.
Yeah.
And, and what, in, in the interest of communication and, and getting people the information that they really need, how can we make it, when I say accessible, I mean readable and easily understandable? And maybe with like links to the nitty gritty, if you're the kind of person who wants the nitty gritty. Or, or maybe you have the like, the first 10 pages are the, this is the condensed version. And then here are your 50 million appendixes that has the actual policy. I don't know how we do that, I just, my concern is that it'd be easy to read.
Gets buried.
That's something I'd want to confer with our legal counsel over, so that in the, so the parsing of that, we don't do anything to materially change the policy or lead to any misunderstanding of the policy. But we're glad to, to, to check with our legal counsel on that.
And I wonder if it's part of the RSA? Do you remember last year when we had to reprint all the IDs? Because that new RSA came out and all of that is red? So I wonder if it's part of the new RSA?
I'm always very careful when I suggest changes to the policies because I'm mindful of the fact that our legal counsel has gone over it. And that there are, there are, we're very bound by state law in what we are supposed to, what, what kind of policies we're supposed to have. And specifically what we're supposed to address and that sort of thing, so yeah.
Yeah, you, we've always, always been advised with respect to policies, be very careful with any modifications that you make to what they have suggested from a legal perspective.
I just want to say, I definitely hear what you're saying. I'm one of those person, people though, that does not want to chase a rabbit trail. When I want to answer and I want to see a policy, if the, if it's being referred to in the, in the handbook, I just want it in the handbook. I don't want it in the, in the, in where the practical stuff is. I want it to be like, refer to appendix C, that's where you'll find the policy. Oh, good, okay, I can just go there. It's not like, hey, go on our website, find this page. Listen, I, maybe I just have too many kids for that, but like, it's just, I don't want to do that. So I personally like the idea of putting it in the, in the handbook. I have it, if I want to find it, it's there, you know, and if I want to go on a rabbit trail, I can go on my own rabbit trail.
So I looked at the RSA, it doesn't say anything about putting it in the handbook or in any communication in it. That's what I've been sitting here looking at. However, I agree with both these ladies after I just wrote our own student handbook. This one is only four pages, but this one is, you know, nine pages. If you take all of our policies, and they are on our website, you can go look, look at all the policies. It makes for a very, very long handbook. So I think, you know, saying, put, look at these appendix, but here's the link on the website. Because I think a lot of people are going to go look at the handbooks online and they can click that link and it takes them right to.
And that's what the attorney was advising us, make sure the link goes right to the exact policy.
Absolutely agree with that.
So that people don't, don't have to engage in a whiz-waldo of policy search.
And I have played that game and it's not fun.
Yes.
We just approved. For those paying attention at home, we just approved the waiving of the first reading. Moving on to approval of minutes from the July 10th, 2023, public and non-public meetings. Do we have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the July 10th, 2023, public and non-public minutes.
Second?
I will second that.
Jenna seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Oh, opposed, abstentions, there we go, five, four, zero, one. Acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000, Mr. Matt Chivanel.
Thank you very much. First, we have to Merrimack High School from the Merrimack Lions Club, a gift of $1,000. It's a community grant to an MHS teacher. This year's winner, Joshua Pelton, applied to buy classroom technology. That's gift number one from the Lions Club to the high school. Josh Pelton, technology, $1,000, we thank them. The next is to Merrimack High School from Kathy Hilliard, Hilliard, for a treadmill Nordic track, value of $500 to benefit the students in the Get Set, Get Set and Bridges program. We thank her very much for her generosity.
Thank you.
Do we do these separate or? Separate, we do separately, okay. Do I have a motion to accept the Merrimack Lions Club gift of $1,000 to Merrimack High School? Second? Let's see, Lori, we'll give that to Lori. All those in favor? Aye, five zero zero. Do I have a motion to accept Kathy Hilliard's gift to Merrimack High School for the Get Set Bridges program for $500?
Sure, I'd be happy to make a motion that we accept Kathy's generous donation to the Merrimack School District for $500.
Jenna makes the motion, do we have a second? Naomi, all those in favor? Five zero zero, motion passes. Thank you so much for your generous donations. It's very much appreciated. Moving on to the consent agenda, educator resignation.
There are four resignations in your packet tonight. First, Brett Wilson, special education teacher, Merrimack High School. Jackson Dillard, special education teacher, Merrimack Middle School. Noella Nardino, special education coordinator, James Mastercola Elementary School. And Taylor Newman, world language teacher at Merrimack High School.
Do we want to go through all of them and then vote on all of them? Yeah, we'll do the.
Those are all the resignations.
And then the nominations as well? Can we do that all together? Yeah, because it's a consent agenda.
Okay, so you don't have to, okay. And so then there are, let's see, six nominations brought forth for your consideration tonight. First, Rachel Burton, school counselor, Merrimack High School. Beth Perry, special education teacher, James Mastercola Elementary School. Jennifer German, special education teacher, James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. Casey Anderson, a one-year digital learning specialist at James Mastercola Elementary School. Joanne DiBello, special education coordinator, James Mastercola Elementary School. And Johanna Easterling, world language teacher at Merrimack High School.
Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Naomi, do we have a second? Jenna seconds, all those in favor? Passes five zero zero. All right, moving on to other committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Go ahead, Lori.
The, the planning, the planning and building committee did meet. I was in the Outer Banks of North Carolina on vacation, but I think Matt was there and they just talked about the, the vision going forward this year.
Any other committee reports? It's like we're good, probably expect more of those in the next few months. Correspondence. It's been quiet on my end. It's either a bad thing, it's been quiet. Comments from the board?
There's been quite a bit of community discussion around school supplies and why the school district doesn't provide school supplies, why it's not in our budget. It might be something we'd like to address at our next meeting.
We'll be glad to address that because, you know, we, we're obligated to provide the school supplies that are necessary for carrying out the curriculum. I think a lot of the wish lists that sometimes teachers publish are for somewhat discretionary items that just kind of augment the materials and supplies that we provide as a district.
So I agree, there's been a lot of discussion and, you know, I think, you know, I said, because Ken and I were talking about this also, that, you know, if it's a classroom, like, please bring in, you know, Kleenex or, everyone's on board for that. It's when someone goes on like the Merrimack Forum and said, this is a list of things that I want this year in my classroom. I think some people are getting a little heartburn over that.
And I, I think, you know, Kleenex and Clorox wipes and those kinds of things, they're not requirements. But they really are, I mean, kids get sick and no need to blow noses and clean off desks and things like that. But that has been like a request by teachers for decades. I mean, even in my lifetime, those kinds of things were requests. They're not, they're not new and they're not part of our budget. We have cleanings, we do have other cleaning and those kinds of things, but just for the everyday stuff. And especially tissues, those just seem to be the things that run out long around April.
Yep. Yeah, and things happen and I just saw, I think it was a Target commercial the other day where they said, those school supply lists are coming in. So this isn't exclusive to us, this is a national thing. And I, yeah, like you said, Lori, these have been around forever.
However, when we, when we have seen specific individuals put out a generic list of items that we should be purchasing and that we have budgeted for, because every school has a classroom supply account.
Correct.
And so we have, through the principal, talked to that person and said, you know, utilize the budget that's there for you to take care of your classroom supplies. We all realize, it's like a rite of passage, getting classroom supplies. You know, for those things that are unique, of those things you just want, or the, you know, like the pencil box or the ruler or something like that. We've all been there, but for general classroom supplies, there is a budget for it. And we do encourage the teachers and the administrators to utilize that. But I, I know what you're saying.
And I would, if there are teachers in Merrimack who are listening to this right now, if you feel that you are not able to supply your classroom with the necessary equipment, please communicate that with your administrator now as we start preparing the budget for next year. Because I, we, I think everybody here agrees that those are the things that we should be providing for those kids. And if we, if you find that you are unable to, say something so we can help you with that.
Good point.
All right, any other comments? We will move on to public comments on agenda items only. If you'd like to speak on any of the topics brought up tonight, you're welcome to come up to the microphone and state your name. And if you are a student, only just your name, not your address. Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? Naomi seconds, all those in favor? Have a great night, everybody, we will see you in September.